Council Vice President. Council Vice President Easton. Counsel. Did you want to reach out to the police to see if the lady is here?
Yeah, I'll get her to go and help them do that.
Okay.
Let me, I'll run it, but 502024.
Pull your mic down some, please.
Huh?
Yeah.
Hello?
If I'm not mistaken. Where is that lady? Let me check real quick. Oh, thank you. The driver's license has expired.
There is a new driver's license. I don't know why it's not on here.
You have it?
Marty Mays has it.
Okay. You want to pull it?
No, we'll take his word for it.
And Council President to the BA?
512024. That was missing something. What's that missing?
Fifty-one.
Which street is that on? That property has a driveway.
That, that wouldn't change the engineer's analysis.
Okay. No?
No.
I thought part of this, what the thing was, we were saying if they had a driveway, did they really need handicap parking?
There can be multiple vehicles. There can be multiple vehicles.
Okay. Okay. All right. Councilman Coley?
Yeah, I'm looking at these addresses. I have 471 and 477. Are they within 300 feet? Or? Or, or they have some exceptional circumstances?
According to the engineer's letter, it meets the requirements. They're supposed to measure it.
Okay.
Council colleagues, anyone else?
Yeah, um, 500 2024. Mr. BA, can you just explain that? Uh, I had a problem. What did I have? No, 508. 508.
508.
Yes, 508, sorry.
Sure. There's a property known as 540 Mitchell Street, which has been in the site remediation program for over a decade. It was originally owned by the city. It was sold to a private party, I think about three years ago, four years ago. The site remediation plan is still in effect, and this is all part of the bid, which is the site remediation program.
So even though we, we sold it, we are still responsible for the site remediation until this?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
Anyone else?
She's on her way.
Should we go on or should we just?
Counsel President?
Councilman Montague?
How about 43? Maybe Chris is going to tell me that, that driver's license was updated because it's expired.
Table eight. Table eight, because I don't have an answer for that one.
You don't have an answer for that one?
It's 4323.
Council President?
Councilwoman Gilbert?
I'd like to... I'll just, I'll just do it when we do the resolutions. I just want to pull it for a separate, a separate vote so I can make a statement. Resolution 510-2024.
Okay.
And Councilman Coley already asked a question for the other one, so I'm good.
Okay.
Council President?
Councilwoman?
Can, um, I'd be interested to explain 5002024. What, what are they going to be doing?
I'm sorry, can you say the number loud?
5002024.
Please, please.
Yes, um, this is Long Railroad Place and the underpass that's there. They'll be putting in new sidewalks, new curbs, and new lighting.
Is that on our, uh? What's your location?
It's the underpass at Railroad Place. The underpass at Railroad Place.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else?
Have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn Summers Johnson?
Second, Montague?
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Montague the third. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Seven oh eight. This is a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Orange Township, held in Council Chamber, City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Wednesday, November 6, 2024, following the conference meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We ask Councilman Coley to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Present.
Councilmember Easton?
Present.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Present.
Councilmember Montague III?
Here.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Here.
Council President Wooten?
Here.
Also Presidents Joyce Lanier, the City Clerk, Tamara Robinson, the Deputy City Clerk, Chris M. Hartwick, the Business Administrator, Derek Brown, the Fire Chief, Gracia R. Montillas, the City Attorney, Marlon G. Towns, the Legislative Research Officer, Vincent Vidello, Police Chief, and Tricia Cipio, the City Clerk's Office. The requirements of NJSA 10:4-9 at sect, the Sunshine Law, has been met. A notice of this meeting was sent to the record transcript, published in the Star Ledger on July 11, 2024, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall and on the council website, the city website, and filed in the office of the city clerk. Approval of meeting minutes, October 1, 2024, conference meeting minutes. Councilmember Gilbert was absent and should abstain. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion, Coley.
Second, Montague?
Motion by Councilmember Coley, second by Councilmember Montague the third. Roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Abstain.
Councilmember Montague the third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion pass. October 1, 2024, regular meeting minutes. Motion to adopt?
Motion, Coley.
Second, Easton.
Motion by Councilmember Coley, second by Councilmember Easton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. October 15, 2024, special meeting minutes. Councilmember Gilbert was absent and should abstain. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Montague?
Second, Easton.
Motion to adopt by Councilmember Montague III, second by Councilmember Easton. Roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Abstain.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion pass. October 15, 2024, conference and regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion, Coley.
Second, Easton.
Motion by Councilmember Coley, second by Councilmember Easton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are no reports. There are no open reports. Council reports? No council reports. There's no communication and petitions. We have them. Members of the public wishing to address the council may do during this portion of the meeting. Speakers must sign their names on the comment sign-up sheet and approach the microphone when called upon. To allow maximum public involvement, each speaker is permitted one five-minute period to interact with the council and must provide his or her name and street address prior to beginning any remarks. Visual aids are not permitted. Speakers are reminded to be courteous and mindful of other individuals. Each person has the right to speak on any subject but is responsible for abuse of that right. The city, there's no liability for any comments made by the public and maintain discretion to remove any person engaging in obscene or disruptive conduct. The council will consider all comments and questions and will respond if and when appropriate, which may or may not be during this meeting.
Rachel Tennant?
Good evening. Rachel Tennant, 461 Waverly Place. Today is a sad day. With all the racial comments during the election, it kind of took me back to... Some of you probably weren't even born yet or lived in New Jersey, but there was a serious race war in Valesburg back and around. Do you remember? Yep? Couldn't even go to school. The police had to escort people to the high school. That's what that brought me back to. But that's what the people wanted, so that's what they have. Won't even call them, I won't even mention his name. But, um, on a local level, I noticed a lot of signs in front of the library that was made, but everyone needs to consider it, consider. Some of those concerns is not just on a national level. It's also on a local level. Okay? Home ownership, one person made a sign for home ownership, lower taxes, crime, rent control. And there were many others. But I think people really need to, especially Democrats, really need to take a look and listen to what the constituents are saying. People are speaking and not being answered. And what does that translate to? We saw what it translates to. Okay, aside from that, two things. On the bill list, I noticed there's, on page 11, there's a Nissan Altima. I'm not sure what that is for. And then on the previous bill list, there was, um, something for Epstein Hardware. I thought they went out of business a while ago. So I was wondering why, why they were even on that bill list. So that's the two things. And the last thing, my mortgage provider, Wells Fargo, they mailed, not, sorry, not mailed, they wired my mortgage payment 14 days ago, and it's still not posted. And I did a random check of other properties, and there's quite a few properties, their mortgage payments is not updated on the first. So I'm not sure if there's an issue, who's responsible for that, but my payment was sent. That was confirmed by the bank.
You mean the tax escrow, right?
I'm sorry. Yeah, tax.
It's... All right, I'll explain it to you on the side.
Okay. I was just concerned it was sent and it just wasn't updated. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Tennant. You scared me for a minute. When you say a mortgage payment, I was like, oh! No problem, no problem. Diana Campbell?
Good evening, Councilmember. My name is Diana Campbell, but I'm going to decline at this moment.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is there a motion to close citizen comments?
Motion to close citizens' comments, Summers Johnson?
Second.
Second, Easton?
Motion to close citizen comments by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Easton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Council comments?
Councilwoman Gilbert?
Thank you, Council President. I'm sad. I'm trying to hide it, though. Yeah, um, so I just want to say something before I jump into the upcoming events. We are the same country that we were when we fell asleep last night. America has seen many things, and I do believe that we're going to be all right. I have seen that Orange, the City of Orange, had more voters come out this election, and we want to do our very best to make sure that the people are engaged and exercising their right to vote. I would also like to say, this Monday, I actually traveled out to Allentown, Pennsylvania, to rally with Madam Vice President Kamala Harris and to listen to her, to listen to what her plans were and her ideas were. And to wake up this morning to know that she is not going to be our future president is very disheartening. But it is a challenge that speaks volumes. It speaks to where we are in the country. It speaks to the morale. And it also speaks to how we are engaging with the residents. And one thing about her speech that I did love is like towards the end, she was saying, "We have to be intentional about building communities. We have to be intentional about building coalitions." As a council member for about two and a half years, I really enjoy working on the behalf of the residents, and this is why I have meetings, this is why I make myself very accessible, to hear from you all so that we could work on a lot of issues. I won't say that I'm the only councilperson. A lot of the councilmembers here have been doing this prior to me even existing as a councilmember. But what I'm saying is, it takes work, it takes effort, it takes heart and passion to serve. And we thank Vice President Kamala Harris for her service. I do want to give everyone a couple of updates about some events that are coming our way. Tomorrow, I will be having a meeting here in the council chambers at 7:00 PM. It was structured to be a town hall, but I'm just going to call it a meeting in which everyone is welcome. I always have different kind of people that show up at my West Ward meetings. We're going to be talking about future legislation, which is why I opened it up to everyone, and things that could really help us as a community to make sure that we are being, to make sure that we are actively looking for solutions, especially in the coming New Year. I also have information here from First Baptist Shiloh Church on Main Street. On November 16th, they will be having... Just scrolling through my email. They will be having a soup kitchen and a community outreach event. It will be at 424 Main Street from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then also, there is a call for artists within Orange. I believe West Orange Library is having an event. They're looking for Orange artists to participate. It's called the Hat City Exhibit. If you want more information, please email me at qhillbert@orangenj.gov, and I will send you all the information for the deadline and the submission for your artworks or whatever you want to exhibit. The deadline is January, sorry, yes, January 3. And again, this is an exhibit that's going to be hosted by West Orange Public Library, but they are looking to include all of the Oranges to showcase some of the history and the amazing artwork that comes from our communities. Other than that, my final thing is that I am still having a clothing drive. We've received a lot of coats and clothing for women and children. We still need blankets, socks, hygiene products. We are going to be creating care packages that we're going to be giving out in December so we could really use more help. If you have any of these items, you can drop them off at my office at 170 Scotland Road, Suite 1, and you can also give me a call if you need to set up a different time to drop off. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Gilbert, are you asking for new items or gently used items?
Both. They can be new, uh, new or gently used. We will have a cleaning service to go through all of them, and then we will package them to give to families.
Is there an age group from like zero to 12 or zero to 100 or?
We're doing infants, toddlers, and then we're also doing adults and teenagers. We do have some people who donated some stuff for the seniors, like adult diapers, some sweaters, some jackets. But please, 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 if possibly if you could, focus on our adult men that need jackets, sweaters, socks, shoes. This is really important because I'm also focusing on the population that I see in our community that are out on the streets right now. Thank you.
Council Vice President Easton?
Before I just talk that, and I want to tell Councilwoman Gilbert, you need to tell them where the West Orange Library is because right now people can't find it. So maybe if you tell them where it is currently when they're looking for it, the West Orange Library. Do you know where it is?
No, they're not going to.
They're not going to, but they still need to know where it is when you talk about the West Orange Library. Yeah, it's behind ShopRite. It's hard to find, but they have, it's up there behind ShopRite. You've got to go up a street and find it up in the back somewhere. I think you can see it from the ShopRite Street, but... People have been up there seeing it. I can't find the library anymore.
Essex Green, right?
The library in West Orange now Senior Building. So, yeah. I just want to thank all of our residents that came out yesterday to exercise their right to vote. We had a good turn up, turnout. The excitement and the momentum was good, and I was hoping that they will keep their momentum going into the future because to vote is a privilege. Now, today I read something that said, "For our culture, Trump is probably going to try and take away our right to vote." So I want everyone, I know he won the election, but we need to pay attention especially to the federally funded programs that he has control over. Because if you're on SSI, Social Security, Medicaid, Medicare, and those programs, we need to pay attention to what's happening when he takes office in January. I also, real quickly, I want to introduce, we have, boxing has come to Orange, and I thought one of our future boxers was going to be here tonight, but 274 Central Avenue had opened up on Sunday, Blackout Boxing. And this is for our students. It's open right there from 5:30 to 8:30, so if you had anybody that's interested to inbox it, and we want, we're always looking for programs for our young people to get them off the street. It's a nice facility. The owners are really nice people to the husband and wife, and they have, their sons are young boxers, but that's something else that we can offer to the children of Orange. 274 Central Avenue, so if you're interested, go over and take a look at the facility. It's small, but it is, it is neat, clean, and they got a lot of equipment in there. In fact, I might take it up myself. Couple of people I want to...
You're done, Council Vice President?
Thank you, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Coley?
Thank you, Council President. I'll be quick. Yesterday was a, um, historic day. The day didn't turn out the way that most of us in this room wanted. However, democracy was at work. And it is what it is. Nothing we can do about democracy. And Vice President, she conceded the election today for a peaceful transfer of power. And also, what we can do about that? You know, we, as people, we just got to just continue to do what we need to do and come out and vote. Do our best, pass it on to everyone who we know. And while I'm talking about that, um, we have a, um, a pastor, Reverend William Freeman. He just retired from Union Baptist Church. Forty-seven years of our service. He's retiring and, and there's going to be a luncheon for him on November 16th. It's going to be a good celebration. His church has done a lot of things for the Orange and New Jersey community. Back in the 60s, Dr. Martin Luther King, he frequented Union Baptist Church on a regular basis, and so did a lot of civil rights people. And Union Baptist Church was also the original owner of 300 Oak Avenue. They, they, they built 300 Oak Avenue. And, and over the years, you know, they, you know, they worked out deals and, you know, they, they, they lost control or they sold their interest in the building. But they were instrumental in putting up these senior complexes here in Orange way, way back when. And I just want to just recognize Reverend Freeman for his years of service at Union Baptist Church here in Orange. And we have a walk-on resolution. It should have been...
Councilman Coley?
Yes.
We can't talk about the walk-on yet until we walk it on.
Okay.
Is that right?
That's fine.
Thank you.
All right.
You done?
I'll leave it right there. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman Montague?
Good evening, everyone. I want to address this to Chris, well, BA Chris, sorry. I want to know where, last year we went over the budget, you know. I know it was out of control last year. Are we, are we going to do the quarterly meetings to find out if everybody is staying on task so we won't go over budget? Because I'm going to have a problem voting for that next year if we go over the budget.
So, in your next packet, you're going to get a year-to-date spend versus budget by line item.
Okay.
And that'll show you places where we're over and places where we're under.
And the places we're over, what's going to be the remedy?
It depends upon the place. I can tell you right now, we're over in some overtime, which we all knew. And the remedy for that may be an emergency appropriation. We will transfer as much money as we need to cover overages in other areas once we've identified monies that's available to transfer.
Okay.
So the only things that I see currently, and obviously this is a snapshot as to where we're at. I looked at it about two weeks ago. We have to deal with the overtime in police and fire. And there are some salary and wage lines that are over. Recreation went over on the summer salaries. I'm sorry. And so we'll have to address that with a transfer as well.
Okay. Thank you. Next thing I want to talk about, maybe everyone, maybe you want to write this down. On Saturday, December 14th, at 234 Lincoln Avenue, Upper Field House, I want to be doing a coat, everything brand-new, coat, shoes, clothing giveaway to the City of Orange. Probably like 400 brand-new coats. Probably like four hundred brand-new coats, a truckload of clothing for male and female, and shoes. So, you know, I want everybody to come while supplies last, we're, we're gonna be there. That's gonna be on December fourteenth from eleven to four P.M. In the West Ward, come on table, come, come and visit, you always come visit us when we do it. So we do, this is the, the fifth annual, uh, event that we did there, and we're gonna do it again this year. So, I want everybody to come out. Also, we have thirty more spots. Today I had a job fair, I don't think anybody knew about it. Did anyone know? I had a job fair.
I saw a live video.
Yeah, a live video. And it was like, um, I would have to say like a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty people in here. I had, I had ten employers, every, uh, it was for Sora license. So they came in, everybody had their Sora license, they looked neat, clean, but they were offering Sora license for fifty dollars for all Orange, New Jersey residents that didn't have one. So if you know anyone that wants to get their Sora license for fifty dollars, I have around twenty-four more spots. So just reach out to me, you have somebody, I'll set them up, that's all they have to pay, fifty dollars, they will get their Sora license. Uh, we set up some police, it was a very, it was a great event today. So, you know, we were proud of that. And you know, I'm happy what we doing in Orange. Oh, Council President?
Yes.
Someone asked me about the menorah lighting, are we doing that this year?
We are. Um, Hanukkah starts on December the twenty-sixth, so I've already talked to Labubitch and, um, to some other Jewish people like the synagogue that's in South Orange on Scotland Road.
We don't have a date yet, right?
So no, I don't know if we're gonna light it the first night or if we're gonna light it a couple nights after, but I, I should know within a week.
People in the community that ask.
I'm so sorry, we was having a side conversation. I was asking, isn't Kwanzaa the same week as well? Are we gonna do something for them as well?
Kwanzaa is the week. It's the week after.
Different week? The week after.
Did she say December twenty-sixth or November twenty-sixth?
December.
Yes, so then it would be around Kwanzaa. Can we check?
We normally do, um, Kwanzaa and the menorah lighting, so maybe.
Yeah, we've been doing both in the past.
Councilman Montague.
Thank you, that, that's it. Thank you very much.
Alright, so can I ask, just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
So what is a Sora license? Some people don't know what a-
Oh, I'm sorry.
And is it Sora, S-O-R-A, S-O-R-A-H?
Right, S-O-R-A.
Okay.
A Sora license is a state, they're certified by the state police. Anyone that's doing commercial security, you must be certified by the state police to work. So it's a license, they have different colored Soras. A regular Sora is a green Sora, which you're not armed. Then they have red Soras, where you become a armed security officer, and both of those things were offered today, was very popular. Uh, anybody that needs someone that wants to be, uh, registered or become a certified Sora officer, come see me, I'll make it happen immediately.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Summers Johnson.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, as everyone said, yesterday was very sad. Um, it felt like, uh, I was attending a funeral, if I'm gonna describe it. Um, as wa- as I was watching the numbers come in, uh, with my mother, she just became very scared. Uh, my youngest son, thank God, was upstairs on his game, not really paying attention, but once he found out, uh, who won, he was very scared. And as a parent, I really didn't have much, um, to say. As the election went on, if we drove through a town and they had signs that said that person's name, he would want me to get out of that area immediately. And my issue with that is, we should always be able to have elections, um, agree to disagree, and it should never be where people are scared of what will happen the next day. Um, had to get up for work this morning, I'm telling you, I was like, what am I gonna tell my students? Because they are the eighth grade, and, um, ninety percent of my students are immigrants, maybe seventy-five percent are Haitian, and they live in the West Ward of Newark. And they were calm, you know, they were calm, but the only thing that I could tell them to do was just continue to be awesome, continue to beat the odds. Many of them came here about three years ago, not speaking any English, and now they're like at the top of my class, so I just reassured them that. Um, I was in a beauty parlor on Saturday, and that's when I kinda got a glimpse of what was about to happen. There was an African-American male in there with me getting his hair done, and the things that he was saying, I thought I was in like another planet or something. He explained to me that my place was not in leadership, it was to have children cook and clean. And he was in his fifties, he wasn't, you know, I, I don't know, like, I tried everything in me not to lose it, but I realized that social media and things like that really was a downfall for the election, so many untruths. My little son said, mommy, if this one wins, they said she's gonna put three hours on the school day, like little things, he's little, so to him, he's like, you know, but I'm thinking, I, like, that's the worst thing that could happen to him, right? But all of these rumors of what they're gonna take away, and as a school teacher, when you think about federal programs, you think about after-school programs, you think about everything in an urban community that we need to make our students thrive, 'cause remember, we have to be ten times better to just sit at the table. So that part scares me, but I don't wanna be scared anymore, I'm kinda over the grieving process, and I'm ready to continue to get to work. Um, I had a South Ward meeting in October, it was very successful. Um, I controlled the tone of the meeting, 'cause we can't work in chaos. Uh, Orange Police was here, they were able to answer a lot of questions right on the spot. Uh, there was a mix-up with a paving on Valley Street, I was given the wrong information, but I got the right information now. They will be paving Valley Street from Tremont Avenue all the way down to the South Orange border. Um, and that, that made me feel good, because again, when we get information, if it's not right, it's our job to go back and get it right, and, and I was able to do that, so I thank everyone for helping me with that. On Halloween, I really dislike going trick-or-treating, it's, it's like, takes a lot of time. So I was so happy that the Bengals had a trunk-or-tree at Metcalf in their well-lit, uh, parking lot. Um, it, we should always have a spot on Halloween just to make sure our kids have a place to go, 'cause it's just, I don't know, it's just a scary time, everyone's not out there for good. Um, it was well-lit, like I said, and it was a success. Haxton Avenue between Haywood and Sterling Avenue received new sidewalks and curves, and right now Mosswood Avenue is receiving sidewalks, um, from Haywood Avenue to the South, South Orange border. So, um, I looked at the signs in front of the library, uh, I, I thought that was awesome. Um, things that might not concern me definitely concerned others. Uh, I'm gonna hug my sons a little tighter, I'm gonna watch them, I'm still gonna be scared, they say the sun up to sundown, um, and I'm scared for my mother being, you know, a widow and needing some of those services that, um, might be at risk, but we can't live in fear, we know who we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Summers Summers Johnson. Um, I just wanna say what Councilman Kerry Colley said, it was democracy at work last night. So whether you like it or not, it's still democracy, and it's still what our system is based on. And that's going from the national level all the way down to the municipal level. And how we can control it is, we get out and vote. We, we have to vote, so we can't sit back, not vote, and then talk junk about what happens with the election, we have to vote. Um, America spoke last night, and some of us were shocked, some of us were not shocked, but America spoke. And so that's, that's what it is going to be for the next, um, four years. But I would say to my colleagues, um, that I work with, I know we're gonna do our darndest to make Orange be not as affected with whatever is going to happen to us as we can, 'cause I know each and every one of us is gonna work very hard in our own right, um, to protect our citizens, 'cause that's what we do in addition to being legislators. I, um, have met with Dr. Fitshu with, and he's gonna get me a meeting with the school board, and we're gonna talk to a group of students. He's gonna let me know within the next two weeks, and some of you may not like this, uh, it happened in Newark, and I think Councilwoman, Council Vice President Easton know where I'm getting ready to go, um, to possibly have students that are sixteen-year-old vote in the school board election only. Um, gonna sit down with a group of students, I would love for my council colleagues to be there, and if they are there, I guess we would have to do a public meeting, so if it's a lot of us there, and I wanna talk to these students, possibly talk to their parents about, um, them possibly voting at the age of sixteen for people that they put on the school board. I see Council Vice President smiling, I don't know, I would love to know what her thoughts are on that.
You know why I'm smiling, because it's interesting that the school board election was never publicized, so nobody knew that there was people on the back of the ballot until they turned it over in the, in the, um, voting booth, when they were filling it out, and they was like, well, we didn't know there was, I don't know what it is, but they never publicized the school board elections. So you get it the best way you can, and somebody said to me, I didn't know there was, uh, I looked back, I didn't know none of those people, who were they? I didn't know who to vote for, so half a lot of the people never even voted for 'em, 'cause they didn't know who it was, and nobody even, I don't know why that never gets any publicity.
Right.
Or any, um, nobody ever talks about the school board elections.
Right. Well, we're gonna have a robust conversation with some sixteen-year-old, seventeen-year-old students. It should be fun, it should be exciting. Um, I wanna talk to my council colleagues who are in education about if it should be just with the people who will be voting, or if we should invite them and their parents, or have two separate sessions, and maybe bring somebody from Newark to Orange, maybe the superintendent from Newark to Orange to also talk about it. But, um, been talking to a lot of students about it, and they are excited about voting, they're really excited about voting, and I think that would be awesome, awesome thing for them to do. Um, I wanna say that I've attended Councilman Montague's events where he gives away the coats and the shoes. Um, it's a phenomenal, phenomenal event, a lot of people come and, um, show up for that event, so I will be attending that. Can't wait to go to the boxing ring, I like Councilwoman Easton, I might take some courses if they'll let us. I've always been interested in boxing, so, uh, I think that would be interesting, uh, to see what my skills are. Uh, with that being said, Councilman Colley is- I'm gonna have the clerk move the agenda, thank y'all.
Council President?
Council President, they have that corner, it was, uh, it used to be a thrift shop there, right next to Walgreens?
Mm-hmm.
And then there's a new barber shop, they have tres- transformed that area, looks really, the barber shop is really nice, and they're with the barber shop, so they really have done something to transform that community.
That's cool. Councilwoman Gilbert?
Yes, uh, I think we all forgot, this weekend is actually Veterans Day.
It is.
Um, so, uh, the city of Orange is gonna have the Veterans Day Parade, um, it starts at twelve P.M. And please come out, come support our heroes, our veterans, everyone who's served. Uh, we will be hosting the, let me make sure I say it right, we will be hosting the Democratic Chair for the Veterans Department, the Veterans Caucus. Um, Ms. Debbie Hamilton-Clax will be with us, and we will also have our debut of our Girl Scouts troop, uh, Troop two zero two six eight for Orange. So I hope everyone comes out, this is a community event, let's show support for the veterans and their families and their contribution to America, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And let them know it's Sunday, it's Sunday.
Sunday, Sunday at twelve o'clock, we're starting at McDonald's. Sounds right?
Madam Clerk?
Council President? When is the, um, Veterans Parade?
That's where she just-
Sunday.
That's where you start, okay, I missed that.
Sunday, at twelve.
And bring your sash.
Bring your, bring your sash from last time, 'cause Garpy said he's not spending no more money.
Now, he told me he has sashes for all the council people.
Oh, yeah.
I saved mine, it's just a gift, I told him to save money.
He said he has a sash for all council people.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinance on second reading, public hearing, forty-three dash twenty-two-four. An ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred and title vehicles and traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, handicap parking spaces, six fourteen Argyle Avenue, the recommendation is to table this.
I make a motion to table?
Second, Montague.
Motion to table by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Montague the Third, on the motion?
On the motion, was it that one or Hillside?
No.
It was, it was, it was forty-three twenty-two-four.
It was Argyle?
Yeah, this was it.
That was the one about the-
That's the one, right? So, are we tabling this until we investigate about the inspired? So it might be at the next meeting, or it might not be at the next meeting?
Just table it, and when we have it, we'll hold it up.
Roll call, Councilmember Colley?
Yes, to table, yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the Third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion passed. Forty-four dash twenty-two-four, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred and title vehicle and traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, handicap parking spaces, three-three-four Hawthorne Ave. Street. Are there any citizens who wish to speak on this ordinance? Motion to close citizen comments?
Motion to close citizens' comments?
Second, Montague.
Motion to close citizen comments by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Montague the Third, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Councilwoman Easton, second.
Motion to adopt by Councilmember Gilbert, second by Councilmember Easton, on the motion? CNN, roll call, Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the Third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent, Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance on introduction, first reading. Fifty dash twenty-two-four, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred and title vehicle and traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, handicap parking spaces, four-seventy-one Hillside Avenue, motion to adopt on first?
Motion.
Second, Colley.
Motion by Councilmember Montague the Third, second by Councilmember Colley, on the motion? CNN roll call, Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the Third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent, Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion passed. Fifty-one dash twenty-two-four, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred and title vehicle and traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, handicap parking spaces, four-seventy-seven Hillside Avenue, motion to adopt on first?
Move, Wooten.
Second, Montague.
Motion by Councilmember Wooten, second by Councilmember Montague the Third, on the motion? CNN roll call, Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the Third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent, Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion passed. Fifty-two dash twenty-two-four, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter two hundred and title vehicle and traffic, section two hundred dash fifty-two dash one, handicap parking spaces, twenty-six North Jefferson Street, motion to adopt on first?
Motion to adopt.
Second, Montague.
Motion by Councilmember Gilbert, second by Councilmember Montague the Third, on the motion? CNN roll call, Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the Third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent, Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
The motion passed. The final reading for all the ordinances that just passed will be December third, twenty twenty-four. Consent agenda, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these- There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. In which event, the items will be removed from the general order of business and considered in a normal sequence of the agenda. Council members?
Council President?
Councilman Montague?
I would like to pull five oh seven, twenty twenty-four.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gilbert?
I mentioned earlier, five one zero dash twenty twenty-four.
Anyone else? The consent agenda consists of the following resolutions. Four ninety-six, four ninety-seven, four ninety-eight, four ninety-nine, five hundred, five oh one, five oh two, five oh three, five oh four, five oh five, five oh six, five oh eight, five oh nine, five eleven. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Motion to adopt.
Second, Montague.
Motion by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Montague the Third. On the motion? CNN roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague the Third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
Motion pass. Five oh seven. Twenty twenty-four. A resolution reappointing Hashem Garrett, a resident of Orange, New Jersey, as a commissioner member of the Housing Authority of the city of Orange Township, New Jersey, for a five-year term sponsored by Councilmember Ross. Is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second, Montague.
Motion, motion to adopt by Councilmember Summers Johnson. Second by Councilmember Montague the Third. On the motion?
On the motion? Why did I say that? I don't know, sorry. I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking out loud.
Okay. Roll call. Councilmember Coley?
I'm sorry, point of order? Council President?
Oh, Council. City Attorney Montulus.
Thank you. Now, I just wanted to um, uh, there was a question as to the um, legality slash consistency of the wording of the resolution. Uh, five oh seven as well as five ten that was pulled. I had a member of my legal team do research and the, the way that the resolutions are read now are, are one hundred percent fine. I just wanted to make sure that that question was in fact answered um, and going forward. So again, the recital of the, uh, both resolutions, five oh seven and five ten are correct. That it is a governing body appointment and not a single um, member appointment. So it is the entire governing body that would do the appointment as stated in the recital. So I know that was an outstanding issue. That's now been answered and corrected. So I just wanted to make sure that the record reflected that. Thank you.
City Attorney Montulus, so should we have removed who sponsored the legislation?
No, as long as the recital properly reflects um, that it is the governing body who is empowered with the authority to appoint the members, which the first paragraph, well, first recital does in fact state that. So I'm fine with the way that it's written.
All right, thank you.
Roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilbert?
You skipped Councilwoman Easton.
Uh, Councilmember Easton?
I'm not invisible, George, yes. Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Gilbert?
Abstain.
Uh, Councilmember Montague the Third?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Uh, Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
That's uh, five yeas, one abstain and one absent. The motion pass. Five ten dash twenty twenty-four.
City Attorney Montulus?
Yes.
So with, with this one, how should five ten be handled?
The language is the same, isn't it? Let me just read it real quick. Yeah, so the language is the same. Again, the recital states and, and specifies that it is a governing body appointment, so it's consistent with the state statute. Um, as opposed to record, as opposed to uh, that it would be an exclusive right to a single um, councilperson, which is not correct. So the way that it's written now and the way that the recital states, with the understanding again, that it is a governing body appointment belonging exclusively to the governing body. In accordance with the state statute.
But since five oh seven was voted up, so should we vote down five ten? Like, how should it be handled? Should we?
Well, it's, I mean, isn't it too different a point? Oh, then yeah, then five ten would have to be voted down.
Could you explain that again?
Okay. Councilwoman Gilbert, explain it for me. So I'm sorry, but you, five ten should be.
So again, it's, it's, so it, at this point, it depends on the number of people that are appointed at this point, right?
Yes.
Okay, so. It'd have to be voted down.
Attorney Montulus?
Give me one second, Councilman.
Okay.
So um, at the advice of council, we gonna table this until we consult with the Housing Authority?
And take a recess.
Or we gonna take a brief recess? So we can figure out the number of appointments?
We're just recommending a five-minute recess.
So a five-minute recess? So I'm, I'm sorry.
We have to vote to go on recess?
So we're in the middle of, on the motion? So, we didn't do the motion? I just read it. Oh, okay. All right, so is there a motion to take a five-minute um, break?
Motion to take a five-minute break?
Second, Montague.
Motion to take a five-minute break by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Montague the Third. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now on a five-minute break at?
Seven, eight o'clock.
Eight PM.
[inaudible]
Oh, you just want to stop?
Yeah, let's call Councilwoman Hilbert. This is what I think we're gonna do. We're gonna keep 507 as we, we'll take it.
So, we're gonna start without the BA in them?
The BA in who?
Just the BA.
Do we need him?
No, we don't need him to start because we're almost finished just meeting. We have to go on to sit down. Councilwoman, we're gonna start.
Okay.
Can I get a motion? We're gonna change it.
I make a motion to reopen the meeting?
Thank you.
Second, Summers Johnson?
Motion to reconvene by Councilwoman Easton, second by Councilwoman Summers Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 510-2024, a resolution appointing Levon Boykins, a resident...
I'm sorry, don't I do a point of order?
Point of order, Council President?
City Attorney Montulus.
So, there was a question as to what could happen or should happen with respect to 510. Again, as I indicated earlier, the wording of the resolution isn't actually correct now that it comports with the state statute. The issue then came up as to whether or not there's enough seats available for an additional appointment. That answer has not yet been realized. So, the governing body has the option to table this resolution. That would be 510-2024. Table it until such time as that question is answered as to whether or not there is another available seat. The other way that, I would recommend tabling it and then we can revisit the issue at a subsequent meeting once that, once the question has been answered.
Motion to table, Summers Johnson?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Motion to table by Councilmember Summers Johnson?
This is 510-2024?
Yes.
Yeah, second.
Second by Councilmember Easton. On the motion?
On the motion.
Councilwoman Hilbert?
Yes. Will we be revisiting our vote for 507-2024? Because that was the term that was expired.
So, you, the governing body can certainly entertain a vote to rescind 507 since it's already been voted on. That certainly is the, at the prerogative of the governing body, or it can just leave everything as is and then table 510. The third option would be to vote 510 down and to bring it back, but I think the cleaner way to do it and the more simplistic way to do it would be to just table it.
I vote to leave 507 and table 510, come back to it?
It's already been voted on, Councilwoman, so there's nothing. Unless there's a, unless there's a motion to rescind and a second, really, nothing else needs to be done.
No problem. So, we're all ready on the motion? So, we got a second? Yeah. Roll call. The motion was by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Easton to table 510-2024. Roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes, to table.
Councilmember Hilbert?
No.
You skipped?
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry.
Sit up, Council.
Councilmember Easton? Councilmember Easton?
Yes, to table.
Councilmember Hilbert?
No.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
And Council President Wooten?
Yes.
That's five yays to table, one nay, and one absent. This item will be tabled. Council, oh, new business.
Point of order, we have one walk on, right?
Yeah, new business. New business, we have one walk on. Walk on is 512-2024, W O, a resolution celebrating the retirement of Reverend William McKinley Freeman, sponsored by Councilmember Coley. Is there a motion to walk this on the agenda?
Motion to walk on, Summers Johnson?
Second, Montague.
Motion to walk on the agenda by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Montague III. Roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
This item has been walked on to the agenda. 512-2024, W O, a resolution celebrating the retirement of Reverend William McKinley Freeman, sponsored by Councilmember Coley. Motion to adopt?
Motion, Coley.
Second, Councilwoman Easton?
Motion by Councilmember Coley, second by Councilmember Easton. On the motion?
Councilwoman Coley, did you want to talk?
I think I made some comments during the council comments, but I just, again, I just wanna just say Reverend Freeman, he has always been a beacon of hope, Union Baptist Church, serving the church and the Orange community for 47 years.
And also on the motion, like, he has opened up that church to various people in our community who, for one reason or another, to hold repasses and funeral services and all at the church's expense, I think. He's like a really good neighbor to us and that neighbor.
Also, isn't that a historic, the church is a historic site, isn't it?
I think so.
Roll call. Councilmember Coley?
Yes.
Councilmember Easton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilbert?
Yes.
Councilmember Montague III?
Yes.
Councilmember Ross is absent. Councilmember Summers Johnson?
Yes.
Council President Wooten?
Yes.
That's six yays, one absent. The motion pass. Councilmembers, is there any other business to be discussed?
Is this our new business?
Yes.
Council President, I think Detective Rossi is here. She wanted to come in and speak for a few minutes as new business.
Could you bring her in? Vice President?
Hello, everyone. Nice to see everybody.
Yeah.
I'm not speaking, I'm just bringing in Detective Rossi. I want to tell you a little bit about a charity event that she's gonna be participating in, and we're really excited about it. And we'd love everyone to come join us, so...
Just have her tell us upfront, Detective Rossi, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone.
Speaking to the mic.
Speaking to the mic.
Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I am Detective Samantha Rossi. I have been proudly serving the city of Orange for five years as a patrolman and now currently proudly as a detective. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to see you all. I wanted to tell you a little bit about a new journey I have taken on. I don't shy away from challenges, as you could see, since I have progressed from a patrolman to a detective. So, I chose to take on a big challenge. I will be fighting in a police versus firefighters charity boxing event entitled Jingle Brawls. That will be on December 13th. Thank you. I am so excited. I'd be lying if I didn't say I wasn't nervous. But I'm very fortunate to have worked with Coach Bashir, who has really turned me into something fierce, let me tell you. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge him and thank him. I remember Director Warren telling me that his mother always taught him, when someone does something good for you, say thank you. So, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Coach Bashir as well, and I'd like to thank him. He took me on. I've never boxed in my life. But I stand before you humbly but confidently, a four-foot-eleven, 119-pound fighter, ready to go. I also think that what I lack in height, I make up for in heart. And I represent my fellow police officers. So, when you see me in that ring and my courage in that ring, it's a direct reflection of the people I am with. You are who you're with, and I'm proud of who I'm with. And I'm proud of who I serve. So, December 13th, it will be at the VFW in Kennelworth. I'm very excited. I hope you can all get to watch them. I can't wait. And I would like to thank Ms. Easton for inviting me to talk to you all here. And I'd like to thank her as well because she came to the grand opening of a wonderful new business here in Orange. I feel that the business was what Orange needed. It represents Orange properly. That would be the new boxing gym on Central Avenue, Blackout Boxing. I'd also like to publicly acknowledge and thank to you Coach Steve and Shadia. They were kind enough to allow me to train there and watch their young son, Mackay, who's inspirational to watch. It's so nice to see. When the kids walk past that business, they see the young fighters working hard, and it's inspirational. It's a good image. That's what the community is, and I'm so proud of that business. And I'm happy for them, and I thank them for letting me train there. So, I'm excited to tell you about my new journey. I'm proud to serve you all as a detective here in Orange, and I hope to continue to do so for a very long time and remain as fierce for a very long time.
Detective Rossi, yeah. Detective Rossi?
Yes, ma'am.
And Chief Brown, which one of your firefighters does she get to knock out?
Council President, just so you know, this is the, the match in Kennelworth is a collaboration between the communities, Clifton. They asked each city to give a representative. East Orange, Clifton, I can't name them all. And she stood up for Orange. So, she's gonna be our...
Thank you so much for coming.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Thank you. Chief Vitiello, you happy?
Don't post a flyer on the, on the website.
Yes, please.
I'm very proud of her. She is very, I can vouch for her, fierce and courageous. So, it's a good thing, and I just wanna, you know, I get choked up, but...
Just having a proud moment.
I love these kids. They do such a great job. They're dedicated. They're worth pride and honor, and I'm proud of each and every one of them. So, thank you for listening.
Can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn, Summers Johnson?
Second, Montague.
Motion to adjourn by Councilmember Summers Johnson, second by Councilmember Montague III. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned at 8:23.